Good afternoon to the boardroom. Is anyone present to do some checks for sound? I hear the boardroom now. Is that you, Harley? Good afternoon.
I am here, but I'm not on to the Zoom link yet. I'm wait, I got to get the Zoom link from Dawn or something here.
Well, I can hear you loud and clear.
That's great. Jay is here.
Good afternoon.
Harley, do you want me to send you the Zoom link?
What was that, Mary?
Do you want me to email you the Zoom link? Because I'm on Zoom.
Either you can or I can, Mary. My computer's still getting lined up here.
Just send it to me, Mary. Thank you.
Okay.
This is always that odd day when we have so many eyes. I just looked down the list of participants and my goodness, it's all of our hardworking, of our hardworking employees. So welcome everyone on Zoom. Thank you for being here.
No, I did not. Oh, Mary just came through.
Did you get it?
Yes, I did, Mary. Thank you.
You betcha.
It's one o'clock. I called the Board of Supervisors into session, budget session with our Budget Director Stella Runde.
Okay. Good afternoon, everyone. Our agenda today is kind of our wrap-up session on the budget. So it's really the discussion of the full budget and everything that you've approved so far thus far. And then looking at our levies and the levy rate and the fund balances to get to at the end of today, setting of the levy. So in your packet, I've put the major decision things that you have made throughout the course of the budget discussions over the last month. And the preliminary tax calculation was the one I included at the beginning as well. So that's just an illustration and for discussion this afternoon. The overall compensation for the whole county, there's a summary of that in the packet, as well as the decisions you made on the compensation board and the improvement requests. So we'll start, I think, with just some outstanding items that we've talked about, but have not yet made decisions on. So I will share my screen. I think we'll first look at our improvement requests, which is listed as item number four, just for reference purpose in the packet.
I believe I got that still. On the agenda.
Yes. So everything in blue is something you've already acted on. Anything in white has had no action. So there's been discussion, but no action at this point. So we can just walk through this list to see if there's any action that the board would like to take at this time and include in this budget or not.
Can I ask you, can I ask you a question, Stella?
Absolutely.
So as we just set up some things here, like there are several that are employment related. There are promotions that some that we've acted on, some, you know, we, we left open some, you know, our mechanics that need to be, you know, compensated perhaps differently in the roads department. There's no action that was taken there. So my question, I guess, is when we do a overall wage improvement for everyone, would the folks who've received a promotion and a pay increase, would they also get that, let's just say, 5% raise? And is there any way we can can control that? If someone's been given a promotion or a raise in this fiscal year we're talking about right now, 23, is there a way for those folks to not receive that second bump based on overall wage increase number?
So Dawn, it looked like you were.
This is Dawn. Can you hear me okay?
Yeah, can you hear me fine?
I can. I would want to look to see how we've done it in the past when we made the adjustments for the roads management and for IT in particular. I'd want to see if we, those new pay skills were subject to that general wage increase as of July 1st. I believe they were, but I'd want to check on that as well. One thing that we, Anthony and I discussed with the union for the mechanics pay is they had that same question when we met with them a couple of weeks ago. And because it's a negotiated wage, we said, no, what we were presenting would be the wage effective on July 1st. It would not be subject to the 3% that they're negotiating with. So we, we kind of carved them out because of their, the union. We said, that's what, that's what we would negotiate with them. But I'm unsure if we've done that in the past with some of our more recent wage adjustments.
Well, how are we going to know the answer to that? Because I mean, I look at the treasurer's office, which is on the screen right now. Lots of, lots of promotions and that's, that's fine as the treasury structures there. But those folks have, you know, significant increases. And then that they would get, you know, whatever proposed increase we would have today, that would be, they would also come in under that non-bargaining improvement, correct?
So Dawn, correct me if I'm wrong, but most of those positions that are displayed on the screen right now are deputy positions. So those would receive the adjustment and the 10% increase approved with the comp board.
That is correct because the deputies are all tied to the treasurer. So if you're giving the treasurer a pay increase, they're going to receive it as well, as well as the increase to their base salary and that percentage of their, of the treasurer's wage. The clerk cashier, that is subject, that's a union employee. So that's already set at 3%.
Yeah. And that, you know, that's, those are the inequities that we're faced with. And I'm not going to talk about bargaining, but you know, and I, I look, I know Stella, you know, your position, there's a greater than a 9% increase there based on, you know, an updated job description and that's fine. But then when I look at, you know, that potential bump, so to speak, I just want to know if that's, if that's something we can control. Stella reports directly to the Board of Supervisors or, you know, how, how in this year of such extremes can we be fair? That's, I guess, what I'm asking for some guidance on.
Well, my comment would be, we have the power and authority to, to change many of these things, short of union contracts, which may be signed and might be multiple years. And so, and then there is some discretion of elected officials related to the percentages, from what I understand. And maybe if the auditor knows, what about the timing of when those percentages start? Is that also at the elected official's discretion?
The timing is usually, in, in our case, in the auditor's office, we usually communicate with HR to figure out what the best time. Typically, it's the start of a fiscal year.
You know, who has that authority?
Well, that would be, I mean, I imagine it's based on the improvement request that we make. So when we send an improvement request to the board, there's an effective date on there. And so that effective date can be set to any date.
So, so an example, on line two, there's one, a specific start date, you know, July 1. And so that would be when the compensation board increase would go into effect. And so the change from 67 to 75 would not occur until July 1. And that's when the comp board change would come in. So there wouldn't be a.
That's correct.
I wouldn't start like today, for example, increased wages and then, you know,
That's correct.
Compounding in for wages on July 1. It'd be just one change on July 1.
Correct. For the deputy that, that I proposed, that we increased from 65 to 70%, that effect would, that would take in, that would take effect on July 1.
So they'd have their wage today.
Correct.
And then the wage would, would change on July 1.
Their wages as a percentage of mine would change on July 1.
July 1.
And they're subject to that 9%. So where a deputy is increased.
Okay.
That increases as a base, as a base percentage of my salary in addition to the increase given to the elected official.
Okay.
So the numbers that we provided in that amount requested, if you just take the first one listed of changing the deputy treasurer at 58%, so that is today's, this year's change. So by moving the position from a clerk cashier to a deputy treasurer at 58%, the change is the $6,018. On July 1, it would also get the 10% increase.
Hypothetically, if you're at $50,000 right now.
Yep.
You go to $56,018, July 1, and then you receive the compensation increase related to that elected official.
Correct.
Got it. So it would, would be a compounding component.
Yes.
And I don't see that actually, because this is all fiscal year 23 that we're talking about now. I, I didn't understand that we were immediately changing deputy wages. And I guess those are the inconsistencies that I think are happening, that when does someone get a raise? And is, do they then get the bump, so to speak, of a wage increase July 1? I, I would like to go through that carefully because I'm not, I'm still not sure we're all saying the same thing.
The, the pay raise for the deputy treasurer getting moved to the 58% would take effect July 1. But that 58% would also reflect the raise that the treasurer had gotten the 10%, I believe. So that person would move from the hourly rate to the 58% of what the treasurer or auditor or whatever paid. So actually, that 10% raise would be in that 58. You understand where, where we're at now, Anne?
Well, I do, but the amount requested and the impact on the budget isn't what's shown to us on the screen.
Right. So when we, when we prepare these figures and account for those changes, we don't have the compensation board approval, I guess, at that point. So we base it on the, the wage as it is on that day. So that 6,018 is based on the 2022 treasurer wage at 58%. So from that clerk cashier position to a deputy treasurer at 58% in FY '22. Then anything that the Board of Supervisors changes with compensation scales or the comp board would also change at July 1.
Right. And, and so what people, some folks are getting, you know, $10,000, $15,000 increases while our union is at a 3% negotiated increase.
Exactly. That's why I voted against the compensation board increases. So they're pretty significant. So that's the largest and there are strong, you know, differences. And, you know, the case was made that those were needed.
Yeah. The compensation board is, is, there's two issues. One is the compensation board, which has been decided. And the other are all of the promotions that have been occurring. And that's, that's what I'm pointing out, I guess, is that we need to be, I think, aware of the various promotions that have been occurring as well, that there's been significant promotions also made. And so when we come to, you know, that, I think that makes it, as I say, unprecedented time where we do have these extremes that sit before the county and I, I don't feel good about it. You know, we've got promotions and then large increases and, and I understand it's all in the background of, you know, cost of living increases and CPI changes, but it's, there's some big changes here.
Yeah. And if you go to the wages component, which is the next spreadsheet, you know, you'll, you'll see those. And Budget Director did a wonderful job of identify those in each and every department. And, you know, whole dollar amount, it's no surprise. It's one of the larger departments and the largest increase, which was the sheriff's. But yeah, I think all of them, changes in wages, countywide total is $976,000. Wage alone benefits follow that.
And does that number then Stella, does that include the, the improvements that we, that we have voted on, such as the treasurer's deputy changes? Does that number include the compensation board change?
It does. So the, the number's been updated a little bit, I think Supervisor Wickham, since the one you're referencing. But all of the improvement and changes have been reflected in the documents that I published in the packet. So the overall change in wages with everything that you have approved so far is $1,070,000. And then, of course, like Supervisor Wickham said, the changes in the FICA and IFRS, et cetera.
Correct. So the $1 million in wage increases is, is based on, we asked you to use a 4% for wagering for 4%.
Yep. That's what's loaded into the budget. So when you look at your fund balances that I provided, all the decisions that you have made are loaded into that. So that's reflected in there today. Anything that you would change today will then be reflected again next week when we meet. So you can see everything in its finality. But as you all directed me on Monday, I used 4% just as a holder in the budget for non-bargaining at the moment.
And, and just so everyone's aware, I mean, the, the non-bargaining numbers is, you know, each of these, if you take them individually, are not that big of a change. It is the totality of it. And then again, the inequities inside these because of promotions and then compensation board increases or promotions and then, and then the annual increase. So there are definitely, you know, it makes me wonder why everyone didn't reposition their employees inside their departments with updated job descriptions. You know, because you want to get that increase and then any increase. So.
And I would say, you know, over the course of the last several years, there have been multiple departments that have done that in front of the board. So, I mean, I think there's precedent on that as you have, as jobs evolve and as the board reviews those over time.
I wonder if we should have some kind of a, I don't know if we need to have a policy of how often an individual can have their job description updated. I'm not suggesting that there's been anything wrong done or anybody's, you know, done anything inappropriately. We've had significant changes in the county as well this year with job duties and job titles and retirement. So, but, you know, would a person be able to get a job, you know, a job improvement? I guess it's a question for Dawn, like every year and stay aggressive? Or are we talking about every four years or every five years? Or, you know, what's kind of the standard?
Right now, when my, right now, when department heads and elected officials come to me, I steer them toward the budget process. I think that's the appropriate. So time to, to evaluate it, just do it once a year, that once a year should coincide with your budget so that, you know, we get that lined up for the next fiscal year. But if, I don't think there's a, a time or a timeline for it. It's if there's significant change to the job duties and responsibilities, they should be done. I can't imagine that's happening, you know, every four years, you know, some of these have probably never been looked at since they've been in place. Some of them are newer and we didn't quite know where, you know, how this job was ultimately going to, you know, the, the roles and responsibilities of that job. But I don't think putting a date on there is really necessary because it would have to be a significant change in duties before I would even recommend it. You know, an elected official can always come at their discretion, but I would, I would look for a significant job change. And I think that happens infrequently.
In, in the time that I've been a supervisor, you have brought forth various departments where you felt improvements were necessary. Are you satisfied that the improvements needed have been made?
In those areas, yes. Roads management, IT, and that's my discussion with them as well is, you know, one bite of the apple, let's look at this. You know, get it to where it's matching comparables, where we're competitive. You know, competitive workforce. And so, yes, I'm, I'm satisfied with where we're at. And sometimes we also look at it when there's resignation. If we've had somebody in the position for a long time, that's a great time to review the position as well. So if you do see ones mid-year, they're usually through that personnel requisition and that's at the time of a vacancy, which again, I believe is infrequent.
I guess what we've seen over the past and as we did the couple other additions to the county staff where the new person started higher than where the old person was because we couldn't draw people. So we, we have to stay competitive with the wages. And we, granted, trust me, I know where you're coming from. But with, we kind of fell into a rut where we're given small raises and small raises and people didn't complain. They're happy where they were. But when they retire and you go to replace them, you can't find anybody to replace them because the wages scale is too low. So then we end up jumping the wage scale up to get these people to take the job. It really isn't fair to the person that left. Somebody comes in and they're starting higher. So I think we have to keep up to keep talented employees. And we have a tremendous staff. From Dawn to Stella to May Hinch and our Disabilities Director. You know, we do have some very talented people, but in order to keep them here, we also have to compensate them comparable to other agencies.
Do we want to stay on the compensation one? I know Stella was talking about some of the capital ones, which had a few, you know, increases in there, but the majority of compensation are, are on the sheet we see here. Just however the board would want to proceed, we've got four or five items.
Well, we didn't take any action about compensation for the veterans, for instance. You know, we didn't, when they made their budget presentation and they presented us with information from the commissioners, which is in some minds, I mean, that's not that different than a comp board. And we didn't take any action on veterans. So I, I think, you know, and then, and then we've been making improvements and promotions and, and then we left the mechanics just out there. So, you know, this has been a year of, of pay increases. And I just want to make sure. pay increases and I just want to make sure that we are acknowledging all those, so I don't know if we want to stay on compensation or we want to jump to other things, but we didn't do anything for veterans, I don't think we made any motions there, I don't think anything there's blue.
And I think was the their request five percent, is that what I recall?
So the veterans um, requested five percent, they do fall under typically non bargaining. So unless you would state them differently, they fall under whatever you do with non bargaining.
And I'm wondering if this year isn't a year to certainly say that we should listen to the commissioners. You know, and in fact, maybe they're going to have a raise, it's in in addition to five percent, I don't know, but um. That stands out to me as an un, we didn't intend to not make decisions, we just weren't maybe making decisions on that day. Um, it's kind of like IT and it's not employment related, but the capital request from IT, some of those may be capital, some of them are not, we didn't make any decisions.
Well, we certainly heard the request, and so you can interpret the no action as a decision um, that would keep the status quo. Um, and so, you know, the board certainly reserves the right to respond with yes, no, or an adjustment. Uh, and the board also reserves the right to not respond, and in that case, it sounds like that's what we did. There wasn't any compelling action to move that forward, at least I didn't hear from my colleagues.
I think that was the day we weren't deciding, I mean, we were kind of letting some things um, not be decided, which is a previous conversation that you and I had Supervisor Wickham about. Are we approving budgets, what you know, what are what are we doing is we, because we didn't treat every department the same. That's what, that's what I would pose to folks, but I guess Stella, if you want to start at the top and roll us through. Um, you know, that's how we're going to get through this, I suppose.
Sure, um, if you do want to stay on wages since it's up, um, the the pieces that are uh, shown in here are the things that you've decided, so um, comp compensation board for the elected officials. Um, and then the two bottom items highlighted in blue would be non bargaining, and then there's a a deputy union still open, so that is obviously subject to change with negotiations. Um, so I don't know if there's any um, consideration for making a decision on non bargaining um, at the moment, or if you'd like to revisit it later today.
Can I see the far right total?
Yes.
County total there. Really one point five million, a little more than that, if you.
Yep, I can sum that.
Health changes as well, so it's a little bit beyond just the compensation percentages, what was the number one, I can't read it, one five?
Uh, one, five, six, seven, nine, nine, eight.
Yeah, one, five, six, seven, one, is the 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 net effect of our compensation increase, including those benefits.
Correct. And if you recall from our um, some of our earliest discussions on um, the health insurance, we budgeted that at a five point eight percent increase.
And just as a reference, we're generalizing here, um, our new money that we receive from evaluations and new development is some years roughly about that one point five number.
True.
And then in, and then in adjustments and valuation years, every other year, it's probably another, there's another seven hundred fifty thousand added to that roughly. Starts to get closer to three million.
I certainly appreciated the um, the memo that was published from the auditor giving us high level non bargaining employees information, so Kevin, I want to thank you for that. Um, because you you went beyond just addressing the folks that work in your um, your department, but you were drawing to our attention, the folks who, the sixty nine employees who are covered by what we're talking about now, which is the non, you know, the non bargaining employees and um. I I guess, are are we saying that Stella's wage increase is going to be her only increase effective July first? Or do we have control over that? Which which of these do we have control over?
Do you want to clarify? I mean, it does get a little dicey with the contracts, non bargaining, elected officials percentages.
But non bargaining, you set the the wage for the employee, so if you say you want to set it at, I don't remember what the low was, one oh five, I think, with no general wage increase, that's what you set, that's what we'll put on the resolution in June, and that will be the annual compensation. If you do not carve it out, we will apply it to, we'll we'll apply the general wage increase to it, like I believe we've done in the past.
It would be my intent to carve out the increase to the budget director to to have that not be impacted by any other further increases. That we are resetting based on an updated job description that will go into effect July first, it will, the pay compensation will increase at that time, which is um, exceeds nine percent, so I think that would be what I would like to do, I hear discussion from my colleagues.
I'm generally comfortable with that as well, I would like to start some sort of precedent that we can, because we haven't done that in the past, I believe. So when we did have increases in the past to IT, when we had increases related to conservation and other ones. Um, we didn't do that, but I I think it's a good practice, I think uh, um, you know, readjusting. Uh, having have two two increases uh, in a short period of time, just doesn't seem to make as much sense to me. So I would be comfortable with that, uh, and then generally as a practice, if HR could guide us in that, that would be helpful. Unfortunately, I know it doesn't include the unions, and it also doesn't include the elected officials and the percentages of their deputies, right? Okay, so you have a few, a few other exceptions there, um, which makes it clunky, but it's what we control.
We all agreed to give Stella the added percentage. Then this come in after the fact, which kind of mixed things up a little bit, if it would have been turned around, I think maybe it would have been a little clearer.
Super, may I speak?
Yes.
This is the auditor, um, I did crap that letter, I appreciate your your kind words, Supervisor McDonough. I would uh, I would argue that a carve out for the budget director would not be uh, a great thing, you you looked at a revised job description and you based compensation on a revised job description, which included additional duties. I don't know that that would preclude the budget director or anybody on the list, or anybody who falls into the non bargaining unit from receiving that non bargaining increase, um, you you didn't pay more money as a gift, you paid more money because you're getting more work and more product. Um, and I certainly would not want to see the list of positions in the memo that I submitted just get carved out based on feelings or based on what we think intentions may be. Um, if the board is approving a job description, whether it's for the budget or whether it's for um, my office or any other office in the county, that job description should stand on its own, and that's what you're paying for. So then any increase that would be applied in a new budget should then apply to everybody on that, in that bucket. And when we look at the total increases, which were listed in the memo, we're not talking about large dollar figures when we look at the greater uh, budget process, we're we're talking about very small amounts here. Um, and so I I guess I just don't see the distinguishing factor where why one person or two people or five people would receive less compensation um, due to an increase because their job description was amended and they were paid more for that amended job description. If if somebody could offer clarification on that, that would be fantastic.
So it isn't, it isn't two or five or six, it is one person. It is one position that we have just been presented that information with. So it's very fresh, it's right now, and it is effective July first. We did have this very same discussion with um, with Ed Raver's position. That also was discussed when the timing and the impact and when there would be an increase. Um, and so that was also taken into consideration, I think one time it was a it was a yes and one time it was a no. So um, we haven't been consistent about it, and when the opportunity is presented to say that's a significant increase based on um, as as Stella told us, there's new things in her job description like grant writing, it's not something she's done or something, but it's in the new job description. So it's not exactly based on what is currently being done, it's based on assuming new job duties are by reporting, things like that, so. It is, it is in anticipation of what her job's going to be. Um, not necessarily today, but also going forward, so I think it's it's different, and I don't intend to carve out this person and that person, this one, I did not vote in favor of of Stella's increase. And so I'm now asking my colleagues to look at the fairness of that going into effect July first and whether that position should be carved out as we're now using the word, so that it's not impacted by another potentially enlarging freeze.
Um, if I may speak on my own behalf quickly, um, the job description um, that was written was actually written that way by former auditor Denise Dolan. There was only a couple of additional points added into it and a big duties assumed. Um, risk management, I've been doing that for four years. Uh, ARPA is new this year, but I have been doing big duties with that for over a year. Um, capital projects have been taken on um, during the transition with uh, former auditor Dolan. That was something she and I discussed over the course of a a couple of year period, probably. So I would um, say that I am doing the job that is written today. There were things in there, like the grant writing specifically, that is not something I have been doing. But I left it in because I knew that the board had expressed interest in that piece. So I didn't remove it from the job description, but that is how it was written uh, prior to me taking the job.
Thank you, Stella.
Yeah, I mean, I think it's it's a good discussion and and you know, and I've gone through wages in the private sector numerous times, and so one of the things that's a little unique here is that you've got a short window, you know, three, five months, you know, less than half a year where you'll have two changes in compensation. And generally speaking, in the private sector, they try to avoid that because it just gets.
That would be technically one change effective July first.
Um.
Yeah, I think that's what this is, it's all effective July first.
We're, there's, there's a bunch of threads, if you go back to the previous slide, you'll see some that are effective February of this year, okay? So um, there are various cases, and my point is, is that having various cases and having various starts and stops related to compensation is it makes it challenging and difficult in the private sector, and many times they try to make it annualized, that's been my experience. Um, that all said, I I guess I, you know, it sounds like the board's got some some various opinions on this and, you know, Stella, do you, excuse me, Dawn, do you have any recommendations related to one, this individual case and then moving forward as we as we go forward?
I think with this discussion, it will help determine policy in the future is how you want to see these, again, we're trying to concentrate them in the budget and in doing that we're mostly, we're pushing toward July first implementation, I know the February date is an exception to that just because of adding a deputy, just because of the the backfilling of of personnel, um, and he felt that was the right time or is the right time to do that. But I think this discussion will lead that to future policy of this of are we going to have it where if we are approving wage scale changes, not just um, general wage increases, but increase, adjusting the entire wage scale based on a job audit? Is that, is that going to be subject to also the GWI at that time, or is it not? And I think to make it easier, I would say make it not at that time and just say, this is the new pay skill that we're approving. Then whatever wage increase you give is not take, does not affect that.
Which would be a change from maybe the last five years.
I would have to look to see how we.
It's not, you know, it's not like fifty candidates, it's probably fifteen that we've we've hit, um. You know, I think generally those who work in government, I would agree with what you said Supervisor Potoff, we have great, great, great people working here. And uh, you know, I wish everyone could get big larges rages and, you know, all more money. But I think most people here also are pleased with what they do and pleased with, you know, the work activity, and that's why they stay year after year. And so really, county is looking at the long game. Um, and it is real money, whether you decide to make the implementation now, or it's real money if you decide to make the percentage increase on a higher number, I know that's real wages and that that is influences people. But I, my vantage point is is a a longer horizon and that, you know, changing uh, the the wage scale for a position and increasing that over a series of years is exactly that, the long game. So so that all said, I'm I'm comfortable with making, you know, the one change that we would have in July um, and issuing that as a policy, but I'm I'm not hard steadfast on it, I could go either way. But if I had to make a decision today, it would be all changes are effective uh, July one, and if they're a whole dollar amount change, and that is above the change in the percentage of a wage, then that whole dollar amount should stay. You'd never want to penalize somebody you know, in one year, because that, wow, I should have just took the four percent from my old wage, I would have made more money. So you'd hate to do that, and there could be a scenario, but assuming that the whole dollar amount uh, in the wage rate, the higher level that somebody's moving to is higher than the increase in compensation they receive from the old rate, then they should go to that higher rate.
I'm I'm not following all that, but I do think that we, I know we did this with IT. And so this is a knowable thing, how we've treated um, the raises that we gave, we did a readjustment of job description there, I think my first year on the board. And I don't recall what happened in July, but to me, that would seem.
An increase, I'm guarantee, I'm pretty mature, unless we carved it out, that's what happened.
Trying to look up.
We can look at it, but that, you know, unless we unless somebody set those back, that's what would have happened.
Right, the only, so I would just suggest that we do that to be fair, and maybe we do need to put this in a policy format of some kind. Um, so that we're aware of of how we go about this, so that it's not dependent upon a particular person, in this case, it's because they are large increases. And um, I would suspect that with the IT director, we were probably looking at modest wage adjustments compounded with modest uh, general wage increase.
The IT director is on the call and actually has his hand raised, if you would allow.
Because he knows, he knows the answer to this, huh?
Go ahead, Nathan.
A good afternoon supervisors, so the adjustment, the re, the new scales that were done in early two thousand eighteen for IT. The scales were not connected to the GWI. The GDI was whatever it was, you had not decided at that time. The new scales were done early in the budget process, they were not connected.
So in other words, the scales were implemented, and so let's say somebody went from forty thousand to fifty thousand. That was implemented, and then if the board approved a three percent non bargaining wage increase, that three percent was applied to the new scale fifty thousand.
Correct, with all of it starting July first, when you do the math.
Correct, yeah, and the date, and of course, the date of when that percentage change would would indicate, and you certainly could have a date related to the scale change too. Um, so that was my understanding, so if we wanted to stay consistent, then you just do that. You have a scale change that occurs, and then you have a percentage increase that is in the non bargaining, so that would be consistent. That's what we've done in the past, I think it's okay, I'm comfortable with it.
Well, right, and let's make it some kind of, I would like it to be consistent and knowable. So when I asked that question, you know, forty minutes ago. Um, it it should be something that's known, right, so we don't have to drag people down round this.
Agreed, agreed, but keep in mind, the question started off with a different topic, which is, which is the treasurer's deputies. And so there there are different rules for different positions, unfortunately. Um, it's not as easy as four percent and a date. Uh, we have bargaining units, and then we have elected officials which have authority related to compensation. So I wish it was real simple, but it's it's confusing when we bring in multiple scenarios, and that's what we did in this conversation. But for non bargaining professionals, I think we were clear. Dawn, does that make sense? And it sounds like the board is saying, you know, change the scale and then add the percentage increase, that's what I'm hearing the board saying, that's what I'm in favor of.
Yeah.
Yeah. When was that?
That would have been.
Before my time. I guess there's some confusion because on my part when we approved the new pay scale for Stella's position. Yes, I was thinking that was including the pay raise. I mean, that was probably a mis- misunderstanding on my part at the time. But I mean, I understand Kevin's point and Jay's point and so I would I think we need clarification for the future. Uh, that everybody's on the same page.
Policy, so I just to make sure, so whatever the pay skill is decided, the general wage increase would still apply to that end July first.
Could be my understanding.
I will make a motion to that effect.
Okay.
Uh, related to this year's budget and hopefully future budgets that related to non bargaining professionals. That uh, new wage scales, once they're approved, do have an application to the increase that is a, the increase that is approved by the board supervisors as well.
I'll second that.
I have a motion in a second, all in favor, signify by aye.
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 Okay, got the one, one little thing done, okay. Now back to the big one, um, are we still on wages?
Yes, uh, so I, um, I just wanted to see what the consensus was regarding some of the figures that I put out in my memo. Um, for the non bargaining bucket. As you were, the board had put in four percent as a placeholder and I had offered some uh, other numbers for six and seven percent and showed the difference of, of what we're looking at cost wise. And then illustrated some of the specialized and technical positions that are in that bucket. And, and you know, I sort of took this on because I don't, a lot of people don't like the we, we talk about how there's different applications for different people, elected officials are different than collective bargaining and everybody has different rules. This is one of those areas where there are no rules and there's nobody advocating for that group of people. Um, so that's the intent behind this letter today.
I appreciate the time you put into the letter. And standing up for everyone, Kevin. Yes, I would not have an issue with the seven percent. Uh, cost of living is five point nine, so you're really only looking at a one percent raise over the cost of living. Colleagues.
Cost of living has never been the um, rationale that I'm aware of behind increases. I don't know that um, going back historically, that's what this board or previous boards have used. It's been um, more to the point of modest increases and modest over time. If I were going to um, and, and we just in an unprecedented year with major increases, I would not join you at seven percent.
Jay, your input. I guess. Sorry Jay. Where would you be at?
I don't have a number right now.
Jay.
Um, so just, you know, been here a little longer, not much, but uh, previous board members did use the uh, social security increase in the cost of living in discussions. Um, we were always higher than those in the past, that was my memory, because they've never been as high as they are now. Um, but, but other supervisors, not myself, but I've heard that used uh, by other supervisors. Um, I mean, it's out there, it's real and certainly if you are an employee, I would make sure that the stakeholders that approve my salary were aware of that. When it's lower, no real reason to rush with that press release to those that make the changes. Um, I'm, I'm still, you know, I think the other piece that's, that's in here and is real is our benefits package. And uh, the contribution that the employees have to that benefits package. Correct me if I'm saying things wrong, has not changed.
It has stayed at seven percent, there's just been the incremental increases as the cost of the plan rise.
The cost for the county has changed significantly.
Correct.
Um, and so that is a benefit to the employees and happy to provide that related to, to insurance. And so I think that, that's another thing you have to be considered. So, long story short, I'm, I'm probably closer to the number that we have right here for non bargaining at that four percent range. And, and that's, that's kind of where I'm at right now, I was hoping we'd be uh, have a closer range with all of the uh, categories, but uh, that hasn't happened in previous years and it looks like it's not going to happen this year either, so that's where we're at.
Dawn or Stella, could you please share your screen with the document that you sent to us this morning, talking about what we know about other counties, just for reference, what increases have been made to their non bargaining staffs?
Yeah, that was a good point as well, that's a very good point, because I, that had influence on me when I reviewed the four or five that you had, so I appreciate that, that work that was done. To uh, get those numbers. So, so the average there is three point eight across, is it, how many are there?
Three point zero eight, just on the ones that have reached out to me.
How many are those, can you?
One, two, three, four, five, six.
Six, okay.
And many of them express the difficulty of um, trying to determine this when they are locked in on other collective bargaining agreements. I know um, that's why Johnson County was going at the two point two five is because they had several um, union contracts locked in at that too. So many of them were struggling with making sure there's some fairness and equity.
If I might also just note, for Johnson County purposes, um, their compensation board recommended an eighteen percent raise across the whole gambit of elected officials. Taking with that obviously all their deputies as well. So I don't know what they, what they finally came to for an increase. But that was a county that had a, a much larger compensation board request than, than our compensation board had and, and folks that may not know, Johnson County, um, their folks are, they, they distort the wage scale in the Eastern Regional uh, mental health board, they, they, they make their wage scale look very differently.
And this is the auditor again, I would, I would just offer as a counterpoint that in, in the case in our office and in many offices throughout the county, we have the people who fall into this bucket are, are managers, are management, are specialized in staff. And we have people who are in management who are looking at a three or four percent GWI and then you have the uh, people who are reporting them coming back with ten, fifteen percent raises. And you know, when we look at retention, when we look at attracting talent and keeping that talent. And when we look at motivation, we all work, we all take pride in our jobs. Um, we're all also here to get a paycheck. And, and it is a, it's a difficult sell for me to explain to a person who is in a position of leadership why they are subject to a three or four percent raise and their subordinates are subject to a ten percent raise.
So the, Kevin, what I would say to you is hopefully their job description is accurate and is updated. So that it reflects what their, their job performance is and would bear on the market, right? So I mean, I, I can't fix that either, so you know, the um, story county's at five percent and, and I don't intend to do anything but five percent for veterans.
And if that's the, and if the recommended tool here is to take a look at these non bargaining positions and and see the last time we looked at the job descriptions and rewrite the job descriptions and come with a new scale, I am more than happy to accommodate. Um, I didn't think it was the intention of the board to look at fifty new job descriptions if that would be the case. You know, in the coming years.
I generally agree with your, your, your first comment, so I, you know, my vantage point is to try to keep the percentage increases. Assume that nine out of ten positions are accurately and fairly compensated. And try to keep the groups, and there's various groups as close as you can percentage wise. That gives you kind of a fairness quotient and voids, wow, that's three times the size of my increase, percentage wise. Um, and so that's why this was the third year I voted against those large compensation increases for elected officials. Uh, and so, yeah, that's, that's my method of, of compensation. I think we, you know, generally speaking, get in that three to five percent range. Maybe a little higher, a little lower in different years, but uh, uh, having large percent increases, uh, I just think are outliers and I, I just don't think they belong in government.
And, and what is the cost Stella or Dawn of one percent, of a one percent increase for the non bargaining bucket of sixty or so, seventy or so employees?
Let me pull it up real quick and I will, I'll calculate it for you.
I think it was like thirty four or five.
It's about thirty four thousand five hundred, but I'll get a accurate number here.
So again, in a, in a, in a strong financial state with a, with a strong uh, balance sheet, if you were for the county, good fund balances. Um, we're talking about each percentage is thirty four and a half thousand dollar difference. And, and this board is routinely making million dollar, multimillion dollar decisions during budget. I would, I, I'll, I'll close on, just keep that in mind, please, I appreciate the time.
And uh, auditor Drago, I also do expect you to come in with job updates, I do. Your department was directly impacted by the retirement and subsequent, your hiring and you have changed your department tremendously and reassigned job duty, so um, I, I fully expect that anything that has resulted here in an oversight will be corrected when you bring that to us um, with an updated job description and pay request.
Oh, it's about a thirty four thousand dollar um, incremental change in wages for every one percent of non bargaining change.
If I can ask my colleagues a question. The commissioner's request, I guess, you know, I'm focused on, you gotta focus on something to start a conversation. The veterans um, improvement request was five percent. And I would not, um, I feel we should support that honestly. And um, so how to do that if we want to carve them out? Or if we want to use five percent, I guess I would maybe address this maybe more to supervisor Potoff, as we've indicated where we might be in a range. Five percent as the general wage increase this year.
I would be inclined to uh, support five percent for all of them. I don't really feel necessary to carve out one entity, I think. We're gonna do it, we do it across the board.
I would lean more towards uniformity as well, um, the number would be closer to four for me. You know, because uh, we, we already have too many categories just because of how we do business, uh, between the unions and between the compensation board and non bargaining. I would prefer not to have subsets within those non bargains where we're, where we don't have to. I know we can't control the compensation board that comes back and, and can be varied, but we can control non bargaining. So, so I would want them to be consistent and my number would be four.
And so now we're talking the difference Stella of thirty four thousand dollars, is that what we're talking about?
Correct, every one percent is thirty four dollar, thirty four dollars, excuse me, thirty four thousand dollar incremental change.
And does that include FICA, IFRS and healthcare?
It does not. I can get that for you quickly here.
Regardless, I, I would make a motion to have the general wage increase be five percent for fiscal year twenty three.
That would be across the board, Nan.
For the non bargaining employees.
I would second that. I have a motion in a second, four or five percent for the non bargaining of classification, all in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Aye. Here unanimously.
Okay. So I think the next thing that we should move to unless there's there any comments? Looked like somebody, nevermind. Um, the next thing we should move to, I think, would be our uh, improvement projects. Um, let me share that. Okay, so everything, like I said earlier, that's highlighted in the blue color has been approved by motion at this point. So um, the treasurer, county attorney, sheriff um, have been approved, I'll just kind of walk down the list. Um, recorder, mapping, secondary roads. Um, there was a discussion on wage adjustments on the mechanics and the shop supervisor. Uh, it's my understanding that Dawn and Anthony were still working on that.
Just a question for you Stella.
Yeah.
The mechanics are covered under the union, aren't they?
That is a question for Dawn. When she, she'll, yeah, she'll step back in and we can ask her that. Um,
I, as I recall, my comment on the, on the wage adjustments for the mechanics was that we needed more information. This was early and we hadn't had any robust discussion about wage increases, general wage increases or compensation board, so I think that, um, I think our hand's been shown here. And, and Dawn and, and Anthony will make this right and bring it back to us in short order.
I'm all, okay, also considering it on a later date, not including in this budget.
Okay.
Okay, that's fine.
Perfect, okay, thank you.
Dawn is back here now.
Are the uh, mechanics in engineering uh, a union position?
The ones that we discussed, all of those are in the unions.
So you heard our decision.
I did not, sorry, I heard my name as I.
They were gonna hold that off, but I guess I was wondering if it's union positions and the union should be negotiating for them. Correct?
Say, uh, can you repeat that, I'm sorry?
The mechanics are part of the union, the union should be negotiating for their classification change.
That, that's how this came about, the union approach, um, Anthony, and that's, and Anthony, I haven't had time, he's out of the office right now and so we haven't had time. Um, we have um, received some additional information from the union regarding some benefits, so when he's back, I believe he's back on Tuesday, we'll take time to compile all that and bring that back.
All right. Just for clarity, thank you. Go ahead Stella, sorry.
Okay, so then um, conservation, uh, those were all approved. The health department, so there was a motion um, to increase the part time clerk to full time, so that's included into the budgets that you've seen. Um, they did also present and there was no action um, about uh, including fifty thousand dollars of COVID nineteen funding in FY twenty three. For the last two years, we have um, included funding within the board of health budget to be used for pandemic related items. Um, and so their discussion or their, their uh, ask was to include fifty thousand for next year.
Make a motion to approve fifty thousand dollars for COVID nineteen funding in fiscal year twenty three for the health department.
I will second that.
I have a motion in a second to approve the fifty thousand for additional COVID funding. All in favor, signify by aye.
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 Aye. That carries.
And then the second piece of the health department that was discussed and um, supported but not acted on in any way was their restructure and their additional employees. So I think there's still discussion to be had at the board level of how you envision that, envision that unfolding. Um, and.
Oh, so that's the one point three.
Yeah, so that's the total for a five year ask for three and a half new employees essentially. So it's doubling the size of the health department. Um, the request was immediately, so to start in FY twenty two actually. And then uh, be out for the duration of the American Rescue Plan Act funding. So um, there just needs to be some discussion at the board level of is it um, three employees immediately, is it staggered, what is what is the board intending?
So Stella, if I might, um, it was not three and a half employees or in, immediately. Um, Sandra Larson, actually, the chair of that board of health actually reached out to me to correct that, she saw that in our proposed minutes and we changed it in the minutes of our official meeting because it was intended to be July first. Um, truly, so, but I mean, I, to go further, I guess I would say that I'm, I'm I have interest in adding folks to this department. I don't know who they will be or what they will be, um, what their job duties will be because we're in the midst of doing some hiring. So um, I wouldn't want to say it's for specific people with specific job descriptions, I think all that needs to be worked up. And so I'm, I'm not um, interested in this, me personally taking action on that today. I think we can use our ARPA funding midway through next uh, fiscal year even when a new hire occurs to make, to make those changes and we can always rely on that ARPA funding. To get it started at least.
I, I'm okay also deferring on that decision to, from a later date and not including in. I'm okay also deferring on that decision to, from a later date and not including in this year's budget or upcoming budget.
Okay.
You need a motion on that or?
Um. We didn't take a motion on the first one like that. I guess it's the board's preference whether you want to. I don't know that we need a motion to exclude it. Per se.
Just let it sit there.
Yeah, it's just, we'll need to come back for additional, with additional information for final approval.
Could we ask that our minutes, could we ask the auditor to make this be more paragraph form than just notation in our minutes that there was consensus? But we would let this go. There was consensus to readdress this issue when there's a permanent hire of an executive director, maybe. So it's not a motion, but it's to ask the minutes be more than just comment.
The auditor has stepped out of the room for a minute, but we will ask him that when he returns.
Well, we have Mary Hubble here with us on Zoom.
She's on yet.
Sure. I mean, these, my voice is being recorded and the video is also running.
I would I guess my feeling would be that I'm in favor of adding to the board. But I would probably be looking at stretching it out further, maybe one employee at a time to see how it works. And not just putting three out there. I just think we need to make sure we're touching where we need to touch before we put three employees there and we're not really sure what they're gonna do.
I'm not committing to three employees supervisor pot off. I'm just saying it's to be readdressed and I think we need to make change there. I don't know what it'll look like.
Okay, okay. Thank you, Anne.
Okay, so that addresses the health department questions. We also approved watershed, a couple of items for facilities maintenance. The one big area that was pretty early on in our discussions that there was no action taken was in IT. And their, or I shouldn't say operating, improvement requests. So these aren't the ARPA piece because we heard about both that day. These are the regular budget improvement requests.
I'll make a motion to approve the IT budget improvement request totaling six hundred and eleven, hundred thousand dollars, six eleven five hundred.
I would like to have a little further discussion on it. The hundred thousand for traffic cameras county, countywide, I think is excessive. We had discussed with Anthony, you know, the, just a couple of cameras, you know, to see the roads not, I'm not quite sure why a hundred thousand is in that. Nathan's there and give a little more.
Yeah. Would Chair, will you allow Nathan to speak on this as we kind of include him in the conversation? It would be helpful as a refresher.
Supervisor Potoff, we do have a motion on the floor. Is it withdrawn or is it?
I'll withdraw.
Thank you.
The, maybe I'll offer a third scenario. I know we've got a lot of work ahead of us on this budget and we have done budget adjustment in the past every year. And I have a lot of faith and trust in our IT director. And so possibly he could approach the board once we get through our budget here and make case for each one of these when we have a little more time and less deadlines for the budget facing us. Just, just one idea.
Okay, no, I wouldn't have an issue with that.
I disagree with that. I have an issue with that. We've, we have completely adopted complete departmental proposals subsequent to the IT presentation. We ran out of time. This meeting went well past five o'clock, probably to five thirty. So I, I think it is important that we try to give an answer to this and that we not make the IT director come back. His presentation was perhaps the most thorough of all of them. So I would like to address them. If you have specific questions about specific items, I'd like to give Nathan Gilmore the time today.
I, I state with my, my last preference.
All right. I'm gonna give Nathan just brief, just give me a brief on the traffic cameras. Where, why that's at a hundred thousand Nathan, can you do that?
Certainly. So we are very, very new to traffic cameras. And we don't have the short distances and the flexibility to put them on traffic lights and light poles. So our costs are unknown because we're doing this way out in the county where we don't have infrastructure. This is enough to get several cameras. I have confidence in that. This is not thirty, forty cameras. This could be eight cameras. It could be fifteen cameras. Until we do the first two or three, we're not going to have a good budget idea. So if a hundred K is too high, I mean, whatever the board is comfortable approving, we will run with that and then report back and see what is the vision between Anthony for additional ones combined with the board. I'm flexible. I mean, he's, Anthony's flexible, I'm flexible. You know me, whatever you're comfortable with. I just don't have enough in-house institutional memory yet because this is still a very new undertaking for all of us and there's a lot of unknowns because we're way out in the county. We're not, you know, at Central and Seventh.
Nathan, can I ask you which one of these requests relates to the generator?
The generator is an ARPA request.
Isn't that essential? Same as these others?
I, I absolutely rank it as essential. I tried to balance as much as I could between ARPA and regular funding. If there's appetite for the board to fund the generator out of, absolutely, like, I mean, we, we need one. It is hundred percent essential. It's a relatively low ask in the grand scheme of things from all the other ARPA requests. But either way, we need one, whether we do it out of general or ARPA. I would rank that as essential.
Yeah. And that kind of, you know, would be another reason I would say is let's give Nathan ample amount of time to present what he feels are important and critical needs in both our operate, both our budget and ARPA funds. Because they can, as you know, we just indicated blend together. So I'm, I've been very pro IT, have been supportive of almost all the budget items in the past. I just don't want to rush it. I don't want to rush it if it's six hundred and eleven thousand dollars. And unfortunately, that seems like the scenario we're in. So, you know, looking at an amendment and or ARPA decisions within the next thirty, ninety days. Hopefully that would be satisfactory to IT. Then I'd be able to make better decisions. But if you're gonna force me to make decisions today on these items, I'm a no.
Well, the budget's still fluid. So Nathan, how much is the, I mean, the, the generator stands out to me as a stark need. It's something that's, I mean, our due diligence would require us to do something. We have repeated crashings of, of utilities down at the courthouse and we need to take care of this. And I would think voters want me to make this happen. So how much is that request? And are there others that are listed as ARPA that are not before us today that should actually be in your, in your budget improvements?
I would say the generator is the only ARPA one that would reasonably be in essential capital funds. Everything else in ARPA has great value, but I would not have ranked it as essential. As far as the ones in front of you, I try to be very honest in the need and the ones that are ranked essential here are that essential. So those are the ones that we need to continue moving forward or to maintain operations on the path we're at. The important ones absolutely, of course, are important. The VMware and the backup, those will be ranked essential next year if they're not approved for this year. So I, essential, we absolutely need. Out of the ARPA though, I would put the generator in essential for this.
So Stella, you can, this document is a work product. You could add a new line in IT and put in the generator. And what, what is the cost of that? Nathan, do you have that before you?
That was fifty thousand.
I think, I think you can, you know, and certainly, you know, this is a document that was sent out to the public and so we're adding it on the fly. And so, question for Stella, are we gonna have another budget amendment this year? Do you believe we will?
I do believe we will.
Okay, so we're gonna have another shot at this. You know, inserting lines and talking about a generator that I'm not familiar with and spending another degree of time on six hundred thousand dollars of IT stuff just doesn't seem like a good process. Why can't we do it later when we have more time and less budget critical things to accomplish right now?
Because we made that decision for conservation and we've done that for the sheriff. We did that on the fly. They were just individual, single pieces of paper with no, no, no backup information. So I do think it's important to recognize the work that, you know, Nathan's not asked me to do. This seems probably embarrassed. But I think it's important that we do spend the time right now. We're finalizing our budget. And if the generator is that important and we think we're gonna make another amendment to fiscal year twenty-two, I'd be happy to put that into a motion to make the generator happen with the next budget improvement for fiscal year twenty-two.
Well, I guess I, all I wanted was some clarification on the traffic camera thing. And you had made the motion to approve it.
Which I withdrew.
So I guess if you.
So would there be?
Make that motion to approve this now or do you want to wait on it, I guess?
I want to wait. It's been an hour and really understand it and understand the value more. And unfortunately, we do have to do our debt levy. We have to look at our balances and the state of Iowa has a timeline. We have the funds available and we have committed to IT things in the past. I just don't see any benefit rushing through it right now and.
I'm gonna make my motion again, which is to approve in fiscal year twenty-three, the budget items that are listed as essential and important by IT.
I will second that. Have a motion and a second to approve the IT budget for essential and important items. All in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Nay?
Been nay.
Then I'll make another motion. That motion is to approve fifty thousand dollars for a generator to be added in an amendment for fiscal year twenty-two.
I will second that. Have a motion and a second to include the generator into that as an amendment to their budget for fifty thousand. All in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Nay?
Nay.
Okay.
Thank you supervisors.
Thank you Nathan.
Okay, the next item on the list, under the budget department, I had presented a request for a budget analyst position. The board had asked. At that time, the, we sit down with the auditors department and work through any kind of alignments, I guess, of duties. They're looking to potentially change duties in their office as well. So we did sit down and go through that on Tuesday afternoon, I believe. There is no proposed change to the job description at the moment. But I think as the auditor's needs evolve, he will be coming forward with those. Did I state that accurately?
Yeah, it was perfect. I can't believe that was Tuesday, though. It seems like a year ago. We did, we had a meeting with our accounting and tax manager and then budget director Stella Runde and myself. And we focus more on the identifying commonalities and in our two departments and, and working towards sort of assisting each other more so than changing the job description as presented. So the auditor's office is in full support of the budget analyst job description as it was presented. And to Stella's point, we are looking at restructuring portions of our office and taking on some additional more fun duties and more things that we can do to benefit the county. And those will be coming, you know, hopefully by year, by calendar year end, we'll be in full swing with those. And then anything that we identify in the future that becomes a common thread between budget and the auditor's office, we will work to shift that need wherever it's greatest. The, that position has our full support.
One of the issues that I raised or comments I had when we talked about this budget analyst position during budget meetings earlier was the software component to create a transparent document such as the school board uses, such as the city of Dubuque uses where there's department by department, something that is created through software that shows costs, budget increases, improvements requested. And Stella, I think you told us that would be sixty-five thousand dollar purchase. That isn't here before us in the budget and I'm wondering if that is, one, is that a one-time cost? Is there an annualized cost? And then is that something that you intend to put into the budget so that the analyst can fully perform the job duty?
So that's a great question. Also out of the blue, this week I was, I received a call from a software company. So I took the call, even though I'm busy, to just hear what they had to say. The software that I had spoken to you about before, I've only demoed one software. The cost of that was about sixty-five thousand. And it's a, I'd have to pull up the documents, but there is a one-time implement, implementation fee and then ongoing software licensing costs. The one that contacted me this week, I believe, was about thirty-five thousand dollars annually. But they will be doing a, an increase April first. So he did not tell me what that was. And then also one-time implementation costs. So I'd like to demo products. I don't know which one I think would best suit our needs, but there's lots of them out there that do just that. I mean, the school board or the city or any of these other entities are using software to generate a lot of these documents and reporting that you see out in the public. So I have great interest in that. I have great interest in the analyst assisting implement software, which is, it's a big deal. It's a big change. So I don't have that presented here because I hadn't presented it yet before. I'm happy to bring that piece back in an amendment time or if the board has interest. It's, it's kind of hard to say until I demo products, what exactly would be the right fit for the county?
Sure, and I appreciate that. And I, obviously I know you, you will do far more due diligence than just that one phone call. You're gonna be, you'll be deep into this and, and I appreciate that about your, your skill set. You'll do that. But I'm wondering if the budget analyst position accurately reflects that that would be something we would expect that person to do, which is to begin to use, you know, what, what we want to show by doubling the size of the budget department is show literally the great work that the county is doing that we just, because of old systems can't, just can't publish that really in a user-friendly mode. Is the description sufficient for this position to take, to take on that job task?
I, I would say it is. There's nothing specific in the job description that talks about implementation of software. But I believe the skill set and the way that the job description is written would be looking for somebody of that caliber that would be able to assist with that. And like I said on Monday, I believe, this job description is in draft format. It's not meant to be a final document that would go out. Once we start recruiting, there'll be a lot of fine tuning of it prior to that. This was meant to give the board and everybody else an idea of what, what I'm requesting.
No, we did have some discussion regarding this position being funded or partially funded out of the ARP funds due to, obviously that's one of the major pushes to get you some assistance with this ARP thing. Does that still hold? Can we use?
Yeah, so I would like to offer, it makes me a little nervous to tie it to a finite period. And I am afraid it might hurt recruiting. I am happy to fund it through ARPA. Should the board choose to fund it that way, I think that's certainly a, a good usage of those. I would just ask you all to consider for the, the type of person I'm looking for, I, it's gonna be a little bit harder to recruit somebody, I'm afraid, for a finite period of time.
That's understandable.
What percentage if you, would you allocate towards American Rescue funds generally off the top of your head?
I would say probably initially. I would say probably initially in the first year, fifty percent, because I think they'll be heavily involved in that that policy, or I shouldn't say policy, but that piece of legislation, learning it, the ins and outs and helping the reporting and tracking and monitoring of the decisions that the board makes. So the monitoring of the projects and the reporting back to the federal government.
You'd think fifty percent all the way through. When's it got to be ended twenty-six, correct?
I think that could be fair.
That's roughly four years from now. It's a, it's a good chunk. At least that's how I thought college was long. So I, I would be interested in tying it to ARPA and actually having it described in the job description as, you know, funding for this is available through twenty-twenty-six. We've had a little lot of positions and with American Rescue Funds, I think this one is definitely justified. Like, good sense to tie those.
I would, I would agree with Supervisor Wickham, but I would add, just add something here and that would be that when the candidates come in Stella, if you're not getting the candidate that you want, it's kind of what I said to the Board of Health. If you're not getting the candidate that you want or need, and that's a reason why, then I would expect you to come back and have further discussion with us. I think we want to hire good staff. And if we need to modify something, then that's a discussion we need to have.
I think that's fair.
Okay. Have a motion for it.
I'll make a motion to include the budget analysis position and use American Rescue Funds and cost allocations in the job description up to fifty percent. For twenty-twenty-six.
Second.
Have a motion in a second to approve the budget analyst that ties to the A R P funds through twenty-twenty-six. All in favor signify by aye.
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 Aye. That carries.
Thank you all. The final things on the list are things that were brought up very early on in budget under purchase of service as pieces of the budget or things that can be funded under code. And we have funded in the past, so I just wanted to bring the discussion back to see if the board has interest in funding these items through the budget process as opposed to purchase of service. So we are allowed to. That doesn't mean we have to. Just wanted to bring that discussion back.
I would think it would probably, probably be easier just to budget because we've given them pretty much the same amount over the years and the code says we can put it in there instead of going through all the paperwork with the purchase of service. But I'll make colleagues feel on that.
I think in particular, I just want to point out the Historic Preservation Commission is a commission of the county as opposed to an external organization. So I'll just leave it that there too.
What is the fund for that Stella? How much are we talking about?
Nine hundred dollars.
So why don't we put that up on the board? That would be my idea. Let's fill that in. And then the fairgrounds hasn't then, but that also been pretty standard. I mean, they have an ARPA request, but our commitment to them has been fairly static.
Yeah, they have an ARPA request in for, I believe, two hundred thousand, but the, the amount that the board has allocated to them basically on annual basis is twenty thousand.
Plus a road grader this year, right? Aren't they getting our, our, our old road grader from Rhodes?
We're getting their old one.
Harley, and Jay, what do you think? I would put the twenty thousand dollars in there too. I'm afraid we're going to lose track of these if we don't do something with them. The historical societies, I don't know that that's as easy to do as it seems because there's been correspondence from Jane Beshen from Dyersville Historical Society. She's asked us to put a line item in for them on an ongoing basis. The commitment between what the Mississippi River Museum and Dubuque County Historical Society does and what it does for some of the smaller historical societies has been, I think, kind of in flux and certainly COVID didn't help that. So I don't know what dollar amount to put in there. Honestly, I might invite them in for conversation.
What, what have we done in the past? Wasn't it seventeen thousand or something like that?
I think seventeen thousand five hundred sticks in my brain.
That, that was the amount that certainly the Dyersville Historical Society found very inadequate. It didn't allow any funds to, to really transfer to them. I think they got a small amount of money. I don't know, a few hundred dollars.
Well, as I said before, and it didn't seem to carry much weight, we do have other budget amendments coming up and we could actually address this later. But if you want to pass over it and come up with a number like we did with I T, we can do that.
Just to at least get Stella to where she needs to be for the budget, I guess, if we'd come up with the number.
Put twenty thousand dollars there. That'll give us enough that we can have conversation and it's, it allows there to be change made. What do my colleagues think of that?
Have consensus with the twenty? Have a motion?
Make a motion to approve the funding as presented for Historical Society's Preservation Commission and Fair Grounds.
I'll second it with some discussion.
Okay.
What I want to make sure is that the, you know, the groups that, you know, may get this and that this isn't the final and done funding. There is American Rescue Funds coming as well. And so I know the fairgrounds and historical societies have requests in there. We'll be hopefully reviewing those in the near future as well.
Right, my understanding was this would just be moving to a line item in our budget instead of purchase of service for these three?
Yeah, so just because the code allows for it, I thought it was worth the discussion again to see if the board had that appetite. So.
So it wouldn't affect the A R P funding at all?
Correct.
Any other discussion?
Nope, that's good.
We have a motion in a second to approve the Historical Society's Historical Preservation Commission and Fair Grounds as line items for a total of forty thousand nine hundred dollars. All in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Aye. Carrie's.
Stella, can I have you go back to another department? I think that we need to at least have some discussion about the way forward is the facilities and maintenance. That was just two very small requests that the director put before us and there are other needs that that department has. We just couldn't come to, I think probably good financial understanding, but the H VAC system, I'm not interested in putting off the care or the funding of that issue until next budget year and then it goes even another year further out. You know, goes to the following July and so forth. So, you know, those are two very minor improvements, but there were some significant improvements requested. Again, they come in under ARPA. And so I'm just kind of feeling like we're not, the ARPA funds aren't before us today. But it's an essential thing for facilities to have funding to do.
You're correct. That was an ARPA request. Actually, the bottle fill and the cleaning equipment were as well. The motions were to bring that forward into just the operating budget or the capital budget. I do know that the, the facilities maintenance was walking through the buildings with an engineer, I believe even today to look at H VAC. So I anticipate more information coming back relatively soon about that issue.
Is that the kind of thing we would anticipate handling with a budget amendment in twenty-two or a budget amendment? The first one to twenty-three, I mean, I don't want to just, I'm going to use a supervisor pot off comment, kick the can down the road on this if we need to start budgeting some major improvements in H VAC.
Sure, I think anything related to ARPA, I anticipate will come back in an amendment. As you make your decisions, we'll amend those into the budget.
I would definitely want more information on the H VAC. The upgrades were five years ago. Sorry, but that was a lot of money for five years, I think. Unless you go to hell with a trade-in deal on these. Just really interested in spending another million.
I don't think so. Again, they got T-shirts hanging out of them. Supervisor Potoff, just turn around. You can see all that we've done to try to make them work. So. No, I don't, I don't have a dollar amount. I just wanted to not skip over to this point in discussion as we talk about budget to make sure we're, when and where we're going to see this come back to us.
Yeah, I, I do believe over, you know, while, while we will be wrapping up budget discussions, I think we'll be heavily intensive into ARPA discussions for the next several months, internal and external. And any, like I said, any of those decisions would be amended into our budget at that time.
Thank you.
Thank you Stella.
Thank you all. So that is all of the departmental improvement requests. So I want to go now to the levy page, which was actually the first thing in your packets today.
A motion to recess for five minutes.
Second.
Have a motion in the second to recess for five minutes. All in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Aye. Recession until, we may get six minutes, may get two forty. Tell the board of supervisors back in the session. Turn it over to Budget Director Stella Rundy.
Okay, so I have projected on your screen, the tax levy calculation, I'll call it. This shows FY twenty-two, so last year or current year's levies. And that ended up being nine point three nine nine one total countywide levy. And so I've taken just FY twenty-three and that green highlighted line is the same total levy rate, just rebalancing into our different categories. So that's, it's just for illustration purposes and it's your starting point, I guess, for your discussion. General basic, we know, remains at three fifty. We have to be at the cap in general basic to levy general supplemental. MHDD, MHDS fund, we know is going away for FY twenty-three. The state is taking over the funding of those services. So we will not be levying anything in that category for FY twenty-three. Debt service is set based on our principal and interest payments in the upcoming year. So that adjusts down slightly. Because of increases in valuations. So that's an incremental reduction of, you know, a little over a penny in that. So that keeps the countywide levy at five point seven four zero zero nine. And then rural basic, same three point six five nine oh two. So all of those where they are presented right now, just keep your levy the same. These numbers are in turn dollars calculated and put into the fund balances that I also showed you. So in those fund balances, and I can project that up here as well. Those fund balances have taken into account everything that you had made decisions on prior to today. So capital projects or adjustments. And took in the levy rate, just assumed no change. So any decisions that you make today obviously will change the levy rate, the fund balances, and we'll bring that back next week prior to finalizing everything. So you can see what has happened. But let me share the fund balances next, just as we're talking about them. So based on all of the stuff that's happened in the last month or so. We have a new budget amendment two, so FY twenty-two amendment two. And then the proposed FY twenty-three. And you can see, you know, the big funds that we always look at really closely, general basic, general sub. MHDS, we know is going away. But now there is a new MHDS fund where the expenses run through and we are reimbursed from the region. So we had to move that into a new fund. Of course, rural services, secondary roads. You know, Anthony was here when he gave his presentation, he was aggressively spending funds on road construction and bridges. So you can see that those fund balances are drawing down quite a bit in the FY twenty-three proposed budget. So I'll open that up for any questions, discussion, the board would like to have. Anything you would like me to show you regarding this in particular.
Well, I guess one of the things I'd like to just remind my colleagues about, which is the secondary roads fund and how that relates to the sales tax. We know that and the, right now at the State House, there is a proposal to take the local sales tax. And that the state will collect that. And then they promise, they really, really promise that they'll return that to us. So I, I I appreciate that Anthony is spending down that secondary roads budget. But I want to ask Budget Director, do we have sufficient reserve there? Are you comfortable? Looks like that will come down to under five percent.
Yeah, I think Anthony was comfortable. I think that is getting to be low. But he is interested in aggressively drawing that down. We also know that road construction season crosses over our budget years. So it would be unlikely that we would draw down that far. But we do budget for the full year. So he can go out and, and plan for those projects. He does that five-year construction budget. But you know, as our year end is June thirtieth, that is right in the middle of any kind of construction season in our area.
I guess if I might, I have another question, then this relates to the other expenses for MHDS. Car expense, all the other incidentals that come with having employees that travel as frequently as, as the CEO does and her expenses for equipment and phones and things. Is that, is that in any way in our general basic or is that all in this new fund, line thirteen?
It's all in that new fund line thirteen. So the way that May Henshin came in and described everything. The region, based on these budgets, will pay us upfront one-fourth of our cost. So prior to July first, we will be receiving one-fourth of our total of expenses from the region to be put into this fund and then used to expend over that quarter. So they'll do that on a quarterly basis and then on the fourth quarter, look at that to make sure that's been accurate and adjust as necessary. So all of those expenses are in there aside from, sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt there, the twenty percent of Ann Cameron's salary that you allocated to substance abuse. So that is budgeted as a transfer out of our general supplemental fund into that MHDS fund. So our reimbursement from the region will be reduced by those services. And I believe it was about twenty-two thousand dollars.
My last question then is about, in what is in the general basic that could be moved to general sub? I know that not just this year, but in past years, I've asked you about public safety, the nine-one-one. Isn't, couldn't that be moved to general sub?
Yes, I think, you know, information that I've gotten clarifying from Carrie Johnson at the Department of Management is that we could definitely put those funds that we're expending right now on the nine-one-one department or our contribution into the nine-one-one services. I think we could move that from general basic to general sub.
What about any share of our, of the law enforcement center that we pay out? Where is that coming out of now of operations over there?
So the law enforcement center, DLEC, we own and operate and we're reimbursed. So the general basic fund were, would be where the general operations of that center would run.
Could it be in general sub? I don't know why we do one or the other, but could it be there?
I would have to look at the code, but I do not believe so. But I can definitely look at code to see.
Okay, thank you.
Can you talk a little bit, maybe jump back to the levy? Walk the board. Or masses of nineteen people on Zoom. On just the change in the mental health. MHDD fund. And really that change and then how, how it relates to the general supplement.
Sure. So over the course of the last several years, the state legislation has been making various changes regarding to the funding of mental health services. So there were pieces of legislation that required us to draw down our fund balances to certain levels. And then those were amended to different levels and the time periods were changed of how long we had to do that. And then finally, in this most recent legislation, the funding was completely taken to the state. But as we've balanced those state changes that have come to us, we have between our MHDS fund levy and our general supplemental levy, moved those back and forth to keep our levy relatively consistent while bringing it down incrementally year over year. But to not, they, they've worked, I guess, hand in hand, the general supplemental and the MHDS fund as we've worked through our levy. This is the year that now we no longer have that, that back and forth between them, I'd say.
Thank you. Switching gears a little bit, I'm looking at a piece of the puzzle. The, we're back to the fund balances. All the capital items that we generally list capital items, you presented that to us and that was roughly six million or somewhere in that neighborhood. And then the wage increases were about a million total wage, I can't remember if the benefits were in there, but keep those off. Those come out of general basic, right? The benefits certainly general sub, but the capital improvements, actual dollars spent come out of general basic, right?
Correct. So you will see the yellow highlighted lines. We did take out debt for capital projects in, in previous years, and there were things that were flowing through different funds. But in general, general basic would be the funding mechanism of capital projects.
And jump, jump back to the levy real quick. The levy on general basic, the revenue generated from the levy for general basic. Eighteen point six down, they wrote, and I don't.
Thirty-nine cents for mental health is added on to that, correct Stella?
Going back to the revenues for general basic. Eighteen point one, excuse me, jumping down to eighteen point six for twenty twenty-three. You check that back on your balances.
So.
Why is it so significantly lower?
So this just represents the tax revenue. There will be other revenues that come into general basic through various mechanisms.
Our pass-throughs, okay, and other fees that we collect.
Yes.
Okay. I knew it was off something and I couldn't figure it out. So that, that's it. So generally jumping back to the balances, you would expect it not to be eighteen point six, you expect to be closer to the twenty
Yes.
Five or twenty-six million.
Yes.
Okay.
Share that again.
Thank you.
Twenty-five and a half approximately million for FY twenty-three.
Ruining up something.
For the levy, you, the mental health thirty-nine cents, you move to supplemental.
Yes, so I just illustrated it that way to keep your levy flat. As you go through and making these decisions, yes. So yes, MHDS levy will go to zero.
So one of the questions that I have and it's toggling or transferring between different topics, don't screen share on this, but
Okay.
The ARPA funds, again, we have in our ARPA request, we continue to have some things that I think are quite likely that we will fund. One of them being emergency radio replacements for our volunteer fire EMS. So that's one, that's one million sixty thousand dollars. I'm just asking this for purposes of puzzling. But wouldn't we have at what point would we want to incur additional debt to not change that levy? So that we, again, if the, if the goal is to generally continue to reduce the levy, which I agree with, but one of the, one of the, the levies that is reducing is the debt service. Just, is there any value to transferring anything into debt?
I think in my perspective, the reason you would start to take out debt would be that you wouldn't have the funds on hand to complete the projects that you were looking to do. So the prime examples are the debt that we have on our books today, the West Campus construction. At that time, we had a great need to modify our facilities at the West Campus for secondary roads and other departments out there. And of course, we did not have the cash on hand to do a project of that magnitude. So I think that's when you would start to look at debt more, more seriously, when you would not have the funds available to complete the projects that you find to be necessary in nature.
And we have thirty-one, you know, there is many millions of requests more than we have ARPA funding for. So I kind of feel like the, the great news is that we have ARPA funding. That's, that's an amazing once in a lifetime occurrence. But I'm also trying to be you know, kind of analytical in saying, we didn't address any of these high level needs that are needs and that we probably, or at least might likely go forward with. But we have this artificial ARPA funding there that is you know, if, if we haven't wrestled that into how we're going to spend it over the next four years. I just, I just see that we could have kind of a, a reduction in the levy and then at some point, an increase in the levy.
Well, we have had reductions in the levy. And so that's been the constant. And right now, related to the state, if we would not change our other levy, being debt service, general supplement, general basic or rural service, we would have another reduction because that thirty-nine cents is gone. We're no longer responsible for that. What could happen in the future, obviously revenues and expenses, just, you know, if they get out of whack, then you're in trouble. The revenue is the only way they're going to change drastically is if we have some sort of downturn in the economy. Otherwise, they'll continue to go up, which they have been. The expense, generally speaking, we get to control, at least the discretionary expense. And as example today, you could call it discretionary. We just invested about seven million dollars of taxpayers' money in projects and wages. For keeping staff. So those are the, the big formulas I look at. And then you know, if you look at just the revenue, you're actually on that cell in twenty-three. So if you look at general base revenue at twenty-five four and you look at the expense of twenty
Twenty-eight two.
Twenty-eight. So you're a couple million short. And then if you go do that with general sub, you're, and this is projected at the, the higher levy, I believe.
It is.
So yeah, so it's projected the higher levy. So if you back out the other levy, you're about three million short. So roughly that comes to about five to six million round dollars that you're short. And then when I look at our fund balances in a couple of different categories, I come up with about fifteen million. So you could be fine for about three years. And fine also means you get to spend seven million dollars in discretionary stuff. Roughly speaking. The wages go up, things go up, you know, that's assuming insurance costs are at today's rates. You might want to throw another million on top of that. So you know, you're dealing with millions. But what I've come to, to realize is that our fund balances and the path of our revenue and generally speaking, our expense line, we can afford a reduction in the levy. Probably almost to the absorption of the thirty-nine cents for a series of years. That's without ARPA funds. That's your backup. If you really, you know, it's not designed to be a backup, but you you clearly could, could do it without ARPA funds for a series of years. So that's what I would look at, you know, because I mean, the state, they're elected and their decisions were, hey, we're going to take this MHDD, the mental health levy off property taxes. You jump over to there, I'll hit my point. Come to the levy. If you look at the MHDD fund, that thirty-nine cents last year, you look at the green, that's zero. If you kept everything else the same, you would lower the property taxes. If you just move it over, there's no reduction in property taxes. So you're, you haven't lessened any property tax reduction. That's just what the math tells me. And so I would be leaning to, to, to have some sort of reduction. And that's what I'd like to lead the board in the conversation with. But that's kind of how I came to my, my math. It's not forever, but you, you do have a window of a series of years. And it could be forever if future boards decide to spend less and, you know, revenues are all good. Could keep that levy for quite a while.
We have spent down some of the fund balances. So we obviously spent money that maybe in other years that wouldn't get spent. I'm one hundred percent with you on lowering the levy. Just as food for thought, we had the discussion last week with city manager. If that would evolve, that would come out of supplemental. I don't know that I would cut the full thirty-nine cents, maybe half to keep some there, because obviously supplemental is running low. Other budget, or other general basic, yada, yada, the roads, we can't use that. That's Anthony's, he's using a large sum of it this year to replace bridges and it's going to be a very aggressive year on the roads. So we can't lower that. We can't really do anything with that. The only thing we can really do anything is with the general supplemental, but. So we can't lower that. We can't really do anything with that. The only thing we can really do anything is with the general supplemental, but. I would think if we would. Take half of the thirty-nine as levy reduction. And place the other half in general supplement, we would kind of protect, be protecting ourselves.
And roughly twenty cents, so instead of forty, twenty or nineteen and a half cents.
And your thoughts? You're muted.
Right. Again, I, I just think we have a bit of a smokescreen of the ARPA. We have so many requests that likely are needed. And we had them come in as ARPA requests for our own departments. And that is, you know, I'm, I'm questioning the clarity of the county needs. Um, for instance, the generator in IT came in as an ARPA request. And in, in what we did today, by, I think unanimous decision, I believe, was put that into, to be added into this fiscal year budget. So who's gone through and looked at the ARPA request to say that it's budget time? If it's needed now, are we showing the citizens what the true needs of the county are? I don't have any problem and I fully intend that the levy is going to come down. Stella and I were talking like ten cents at one point, just as, just throwing out that number, the levy is coming down and it should. But I'm, I am, I try to look at this over multiple years and know not just what we're doing now. But what do the counties need so we can anticipate those as well?
I guess, any of the needs that we deem appropriate will come out of the ARPA funds. Which that's really not going to affect our levy. That's going to come out of the funds that have been given to us by the government. And maybe some of the items that they have listed. I guess as capital projects, we could cover with ARPA funds. And we wouldn't be expending the tax dollars.
Yeah, that's a, an interesting point. I'll just jump in really quick. So, um, if you'll remember, a few weeks ago, we did. Um, by resolution, allocate ten million dollars of our ARPA funding to revenue loss. And what that does is allow the county to use those funds for any governmental service that we provide. So at any point in time, you could, uh, allocate, you could say, well, we've approved a project, project X. And we think that really fits well into our upper funding. We can rebalance those at any point in any amendment. So that ten million dollars gives the board a lot of freedom in what you want to use it for and how you want to allocate it.
But we could pay the generator out of the ERP funds.
Yes.
Because it's actually our, our loss.
Yes.
But we put it into the budget, which no different. It doesn't mean, regardless, it is. It probably should have been in the budget, like Anne stated earlier, because it is kind of an essential thing. We've had power outages here and it's an issue.
Why we discussed it, I think we should state, we haven't done that very often. There's only, there's very few items. We did the water bottles, okay, that was me, you know. Thinking, hey, it's a good idea, it's small, but I, I don't know how many we've done. It's been less than, it's been very small.
I believe it was the water filler, water bubbler and, um, the cleaning equipment were both, um, ARPA requests. And then the generator. So I, I think those three.
Yeah, so it's relatively small, so I'd be careful to mix these up because they are distinct. What's on the board right here has, is, is not ARPA funds. And it's not either the expenses for ARPA funds or the revenue for ARPA funds. So those are, those are backs. Those are sitting in the back waiting for us to pull the trigger.
Correct. There's another number though, that's not being shown here. So the actual amount of MHDD. The, how much Stella have we actually, has our county contributed? When you look at our one million dollar fund balance in Fund Ten. So the thirty-nines, I, all I'm saying is that thirty-nine cents, the, the voters want to see property tax reduction. Because the state legislature told them it was going to happen. And, and they're asking us, where is it? We want to see it. Show me it. And, and the truth is, we've been doing that already over a series of years by reducing the fund that MHDD fund. Because we had a surplus growing at the county in the Fund Ten. So it, I don't want to, I mean, the budget's only in the weeds, but the point is to say it should be thirty-nine cents. Well, maybe it should be. Fifty-five cents if we're going to just exclude it to MHDD. Stella, do you understand what I mean? If I'm not being real clear?
I'm not quite sure I followed, but, um. I, I think I understand part of what you're saying in the fact that. We were using fund balances to do quite a bit of these projects. Um, had we not had fund balances, our levy would have been higher, um, because we wouldn't have had those funds to spend down.
And in previous years, the, our fund balance, our levy was higher for MHDD. It was only at thirty-nine cents because that's all we felt we needed to collect last year. We've been, you know, it, it's not a, it's not a number. That is, um, hard fast, year over year. It's built to look at what we've needed. To anticipate owing to the region.
Agreed.
It's going to be hard to show a taxpayer, there's that piece of legislation right there and look what it gave you back.
Yeah, I would say even as, as soon as a couple of years ago, we were at about fifty-five cents or maybe even sixty cents in that, uh, MHDS levy.
What you used to have, what the, you know, previous calculations used to have what that, that levy contribution is on, for mental health. But two things have happened. One, you know, in the last five years, we have, uh. Our levy rates have been higher than our expenses. So our balances ballooned. And that happened in MHDS. Actually, all of them, other than debt service. My last five years, we've been spending those down. And then we've been, you know, listening to the state related to the change and ultimately that went to zero. And, and so, yeah, we, we have capacity and, and I think. Duke County Board of Supervisors has been lowering property taxes, uh, well before the talk of MHDD. DD fund going down. And so we have done that. Um, it was, it was at ten for a decade. And now it's at nine point three-nine. And so that has been during my term, we've lowered that. And, uh, I think we can lower it again. And so it's really just your, your choice of how, what you want to predict in the future. And how large you want your fund balances to be. Um, my calculations by lowering it by thirty-nine cents would give you. Conservatively, a three-year window where you wouldn't have to change the levy. That's things being equal, but.
I.
We don't want to totally wipe out our fund balance either.
Right.
Didn't go to zero, so it's.
You gotta have some cushion or something going on, something happening.
So if you can quantify that, then I'd be able to agree with it. So is that fifty percent or twenty-five percent?
I think should be thirty percent. We should be maintaining a thirty percent fund balance, just as, um, precaution that we have a deratio. Or we have, you know, um, one of those events that we don't, we don't want to be at zero. And I know we're no, there's no threat that we will be. I'm not suggesting that we're, we're poor. This county has, um, plenty of resources. Financial and people and everything, but I, I don't, that, uh, if I might supervise with them. My hesitancy in making it be thirty-nine cents is that that is what people are going to remember. Is that it's, it's directly related to the MHDD, the state legislature gave us this tax relief. No, we've been giving this tax relief on MHDD for a series of years, for all of the reasons you've already gone into. So that would be my only thing. It's a semantic, I suppose, but saying that, that's where it looks like it's right there and it's right there, but it's, it's not accurate. It's not accurate. We need to reduce it by some number, but it's got to be, again, I don't think it can be directly related to, to that levy. I think it has to be because we can, we really truly feel that's the appropriate levy rate. And maybe that goes with, um, and Harley's saying, we need to know what's around the corner a little bit.
Well, like I said, we had the discussion last week with the city manager. We take the thirty-nine cents off and that would move forward, we're going to be putting something back on.
And I think that's exactly how it should be. That might, so it's in time and justified. And so I exact, I think that's how it should be, is that you make those decisions and you say, yes, we will take on this responsibility. And we will tax for it. To tax and save and just doesn't line up to my calculations.
I understand what you're saying, but the bit, issue being is we are short in general sub already.
Three million a year. Sitting on tens of millions.
Well, we're going to. We're going to transfer just a, a half a million dollars to general sub.
Yeah, you're, you're sure, but you've got ample fund balances and you get revenue every year that in ex, in excess of your expenses. Well, you know, I agree.
Stella, if you were looking at fund balances, you know, the, the critical ones, so basic and, and sup of a thirty percent balance. What, what would you be looking at for a reduction, just generally to keep us healthy and to plan for a, an, you know, an ever emerging threat? What would that look like for a levy?
So.
Give you a moment to think.
Yep.
I did those thirty percent on the expenses between general basic and general sup, that's eleven point four million. So if you take the expense side of general basic and general sup for proposed this year, thirty percent of those is eleven million, eleven point four. So thirty percent of twenty-eight million and thirty percent of ten. That's what I get. So you'd need eleven million dollars of cushion. Interesting enough, between the two, that's almost what you have, if you look to the right.
One of the things, Jay, one of the things I admire about you most is you have the ability to do that. You can click through this and your math skills are amazing, but I cannot do it as fast. And so I, I really do need to have Stella show me, um, and so whether they're ridiculous questions or not, I need to be shown.
I think they're great questions. I was just kind of helping her out and she can also be, I can be wrong. So I had sometimes heard doing math on the fly is very challenging. I'd already done it five minutes before.
So when I look at the fund balance, um, let me put that back up real quick. So prior to anything done today, um, our fund balance for general sup was projected to be about forty percent. So I think you have room, um, there to make some change. Um, each one cent, I believe, is about fifty-three thousand dollars. So if you want to get to about a thirty percent. Balance, you can go down about a million dollars in levy. That's what it was. So that gets you to about thirty-one percent. So, um. A ten cent change in the levy is. Five hundred and thirty-three thousand, five fifty-five. So I think comfortably ten to twenty cents would put you at a thirty percent plus fund balance into next year.
I, I agree with you, Matthew just did. Um, and so that's, you know, five hundred and thirty thousand. And, uh, you know, with fund balances that are. Couple other ones in the neighborhood of fifteen million, I think you could at least afford to get to a million dollars or closer to a twenty cent levy reduction. Conservatively, um, and from there, it's, uh. How comfortable board wants to be in reducing that to probably thirty-nine would be my, my ceiling, the highest reduction I'd be looking at. But, you know, I think you, I think you, looking at the math, you easily could do a twenty cent deduction. And be comfortable over the next three years. And I generally believe in usage of taxation and expenses, trying to line those up in a short window. You know, not generational, but within a three to five-year window. And I think that, that would do it.
And that, that's kind of what I had mentioned is twenty cents at a thirty-nine, little too much. As we do want to keep the thirty percent, I think is a good, good area to be in, just, you don't know what's around the corner. Whether it's another pandemic comes and you got to have money for whatever. But I, I would be comfortable with twenty, I guess. And your thoughts?
I, I think we can see logically where twenty needs to happen. And then I think it's a matter of how, you know, how adventuresome you want to be. I agree very much with something that Supervisor Wickham, um, said before, which is, it needs to be transparent. And if we take on a project that we have to pay for, and it's not right now in, you know, in the budget. And maybe that is the nine-one-one system, then we're just going to have to, it's, it's got to be a good enough idea. That it stands on its own merit and that citizens know in that time. If there's a, a modest increase, it will be pennies, but then that would be, that would be necessary. I think all three of us feel that that's the way to govern. And twenty cents to me sounds like it's. A very logical place to be with, um, emergency planning.
I'll, I'll mention one thing that's kind of just anecdotal and then I'll ask you a specific question. So if you, if you thought about our levies and where they're at, and that they've reduced in the last five to six budget periods. And if you looked at the projects that we've completed, some with debt service, some with just cash on hand, general basic. Uh, those include a eleven million dollar nine-one-one system, a thirteen million dollar West Campus. A one million dollar Farley shop. Those are the big ones. You know, we just knocked off six million today. Um, you know, a lot of plan and preparation in there. So, uh, we've been able to do all of those with lowering the tax levy. And so that should tell you, you must have some good revenue coming in and/or you must have good fund balances. So that's been, it's been good. So I think we've done the right things. My question, if you shoot back to the levy, is how would you respond to a taxpayer? And how would you defend this from a budget vantage point is, okay. Mental health levy, if you can go to that, is restricted. That's restricted. So those funds that Wickham just talked about aren't included. Those are restricted. But how come you're raising your levy for general sub? Why are you doing that? Why are you raising that category? Why? Need more money?
So I will say, um, like we've talked about, we can't move basic, we can't move debt service. They kind of are what they are. So as the state has made these changes with MHDS, the only place that we had. Available to make changes as well was general supplemental. So I think that one was probably. I would guess closer to two dollars at one point and had come down, um, I think in this last year to a dollar. Forty-seven, almost one point four six seven one one. So we've been spending down the fund balances there because we had them. Um, I think we're getting down to a more normalized level. Um, I think if like a twenty cent reduction gets you to about a thirty percent fund balance in the next year. I think that's a, a pretty normalized level as opposed to, um, the dollar forty-six is low. It's not sustaining over time forever. Um, that generates seven and a half million dollars of revenue last year. And we know our expenses are, uh, upwards of ten million. So over time, it's not sustainable to keep it that low.
Bond steers, what do you tell the taxpayer?
I, I.
Taxpayer, we're trying to keep a thirty cent fund balance in case of emergencies and we still dropped the levy twenty cents.
The other side of it has said, you know, when you look at your. On, you look at general basic, general sub, debt service, county levy, rural basic, the only ones that left. If you don't reduce that by thirty-nine cents, you raise them. Based one of those and the answer would be yes, we raised general sub. And so they say, why did you do it? Did you need more money? What do you say? Yes?
Trying to sustain a thirty percent fund balance in case of emergencies.
Uh, the, the thirty percent won't hold up, but, uh, um. You know, if you go say over a three or five-year period, it might. So, I, I mean, just, you know, if you don't lower the levy by thirty-nine cents, you are increasing the existing, what's left, levies. And that will be a first. Now, the whole levy's gone down, state did that for us, they mandated it. Boom, it's zero. They said it's going to zero. So they did that. This would be the first time that. Individually are raising the remaining levies that are left cumulatively. When you look at the remaining ones, which are those five that are left.
And we would be raising general sub nineteen cents. They're still at twenty percent. Twenty cent deduction in the overall. So you'd be down to twenty cents would be nine. Twenty cents would be down to nine nineteen.
Just for illustrative purposes.
You forgot the one one. It's nine one one. Well, there you go. And that's. Nine one one. We talked about the general sub helping. Nine one one once, that's magic. And that was a reduction of twenty cents?
Twenty cents, exactly.
So, you know, I, I think there is no. I don't think there's any hard exact answer because there are many variables related to wage, related to insurance costs. Related to evaluations of taxes, related to new development. And related to state changes in code and funding. And so those, those make the formula not exact. So, you know, if my colleagues are more comfortable with twenty, I'm, I'm with you there. I think I've made my points on the thirty nine. And when the numbers came up, as you predicted, Supervisor Potoff, I'm convinced.
Here's a question I would ask. Fiscal year twenty one, the tax levy for MHDD was point five six eight. So maybe we should be removing, reducing the tax by. The, the, the final levy rate and MHDD was set by the state of Iowa last year. They, they changed our levy rate, I believe. So if we wanted to use the lax levy rate that we instituted, we'd have to bring that down. I mean, there's going to be that same taxpayer out there is going to say, well. It should have come down by sixty cents. You were once collecting, you know, sixty cents. In, in any of these are simply the number of the year as it's rolled out. This one was an assist from the state legislature, which. Came back and, and just made their own decision about what we should tax people. Which they might do this year too, who knows? It's still early in the cycle down in Des Moines. But you know, that, that number, according to my records here, two years ago was. Almost fifty seven cents. Should that be a number that we use? What does that do for fund balances?
I think the twenty cents, what did we give last year? Was it nine cents or ten cents?
Well, this, like she, Supervisor McDonough said, the ultimate change came from the state. They modified it with our MDH, but. I think we had done a three or a three cent change and then prior to that a fifteen and then.
Yeah.
Once a forty anyways. It was a ten for a decade and that's easy math.
But what I don't want to be is in the, I don't want to be, I want to set this budget with my colleagues that we can say. Is fair and addresses all of our concerns. I don't want to be the race to the outside edge of. My proposed decrease was greater than your proposed decrease. Because they're all numbers that are, this one's given to us by the state of Iowa, in fact. So. I, I think you can, you can try to remove something so you have one argument for one taxpayer. Or you can do it in a way that you say, we, we designed the levy. Based on the need that we have as we three board members. As a board of supervisors. And one thing that we have done in my term. As a board member, and we did it last year too, is we had unanimity. We all agreed that with each of our concerns being addressed, it was a good financial decision.
My memory is the first couple of years of our budget was not that case. So. I, I believe it was a two to one vote to approve some of our first budgets. So we weren't always unified.
Last year.
History.
Last year was a good year.
That's good. Yeah, and I think, you know, I think, like I said, I think I men- mentioned. Quite a few comments that it's not an exact science, there's not an exact number. But if one of my colleagues says I'm with you at thirty nine, I'm ready to go. I'm trying to solve this and I heard twenty cents, so I'll, I'll take it.
I think that's been fair. I'd love to do the thirty nine.
And maybe one next year.
Oh, possibility.
Yeah, maybe we'll get there next year.
So.
Moving in the right direction.
So be looking for a motion on the twenty cent levy reduction. Or do we need more discussion?
Seems we don't have our number yet. The twenty cents was proposed by Stella. Is that correct Stella or are you at ten percent? A ten cents, I'm sorry.
I, I think that Supervisor Potoff proposed the twenty cents. I was just illustrating that I think you could comfortably do that twenty cents. I think that, that number gets you to about a thirty percent fund balance in your general self projected for next year. And I think that's. A good place to be.
So in, what do you say in response to the thirty nine cents?
I think I say what I said before in that we have moved general supplemental up and down over the course of. The years that I have been here. It has gone up and down with increases and decreases in the MHDS fund. So I do recall, oh, several years ago, we were maybe at twenty four cents in MHDS. And at that time, we brought sup up to balance while decreasing our overall levy every year. So that one has moved around with these changes in MHDS and that's what I would say that. You know, with this final change in MHDS, we're rebalancing it to where we need to be to keep our fund balances healthy at around thirty percent.
So what happens if you do the thirty nine cent reduction? What happens to fund balances? Can you show us that?
Thirty nine. So if you were to reduce it, the full thirty nine cents. You'd be generating a little bit less than eight million, some, we'll say seven point nine million in. Tax revenue in your supplemental fund. On the flip side, then. Oops, sorry. So if I just quick plug that into the fund balance. This year, it would draw the fund balance down to about eighteen and a half percent.
In general sub.
In general sub. I'm sorry, you're.
That doesn't include moving the sheriff's.
Correct. Nope. So if I were to increase our sup. Expenses by, I believe there's about a five hundred and seventy five thousand included in that budget. That would take it down to twelve and a half percent.
Twelve and a half percent fund balance in the general sub.
Yes.
So now you're getting really lean. And, and so now when you start your next budget year. And the next time we do this next January, assuming we're reelected. Then the, the question becomes, now somebody's got to recover that, right?
Yes.
So the general supplemental rate will have to go up in next year, likely.
Or. Do you like to finish the sentence?
So I think Supervisor Wickham is alluding to the fact that you can transfer funds from general basic into general sub. So if you were to not do capital projects at the level that you're doing, you could transfer money from general basic to general sub.
And we could do that too Supervisor Potoff, just by spending the ARPA funding on things that might more likely be capital projects. Because we can, you put ten million dollars into our own, you know, into our budget through the transfer. So, you know, there's not a, it, it might be uncomfortable to be at thirty nine cents, but. If that's where one supervisor is and we can transfer funds, maybe that's where we should be.
I just. I would rather come back again next year and say, hey, we got room, we can drop a little more instead of coming back and saying. Now we're pinched and we're going to have to raise. Personal opinion.
And that's the philosophy we have done over the series of years. So it wasn't one and done. We've incrementally lowered the tax levy over the last five, six years.
And I think. I know we can make it work because we do have the ARP funds.
Correct. So I'll make a motion that we reduce the levy rate by thirty nine cents.
I will second that with some discussion.
Have a motion and a second discussion.
An amenity, it's hard to word to say. I heard a few minutes ago. And I know my colleague to the left is at twenty cents and. Two colleagues at this moment are at thirty nine.
I'm fine with the thirty nine. I'm just looking more towards fund balance. But we do have the ARP funds, so. Taking some of the projects maybe out of the ARP funds, we can still hopefully maintain our thirty percent fund balance.
Yep, that's the way I'm thinking Supervisor Potter. That's what I'm thinking too. It makes us be maybe even more strategic with the ARPA funds.
Yeah. So yeah, I'm, I'm good with it.
And it also would set up most likely a clear differential or increase if we did take on full nine one one responsibilities because that's. One point something, one point five, one point six total, total annual expenditures. Not all that ones because we already paid five hundred thousand. So yeah, I just wanted the opportunity to have you have further discussions and to be comfortable and see where we go with it.
So before you call the vote, I would ask the chair. Harley, I don't want to put you in a bad situation either because. If you feel that you're comfortable and you understand it, this is your second budget. So. You know, I, we can, I, I can be convinced, but. I think the very conservative approach is to lower it. It, it makes it a direct correlation for taxpayers. And it will make us use the ARPA funds strategically, which they're intended to do.
Great. And I agree with you, Anne. I guess I wasn't thinking of the ARPA funds when I was, I was just thinking the twenty cents and the thirty percent fund balance and. But with the ARPA funds, we can. Crisscross, take some of the projects off of the county taxpayers and use the ARPA funds. And we can still maintain our thirty percent fund balance. So I'm, I'm good with the thirty nine cent reduction because.
One last piece that would, would, would add to, you know, saying, yeah, this is the right decision. There was, you know, debt service, you know, generally speaking, we just talked about. Metropolitan Metropolitan ways adding their debt because our debt levy is really low. We, we have very low debt compared to our, you know, statute of how much debt we can absorb. And we have the better credit rating even in the city of Dubuque. And so if you had capital projects, let's say in year two or three from now, that you either couldn't or didn't have funds to use for. Getting debt service for, you know, a million dollars for squad cars or a million dollars for a new shop. So to speak, if you needed that, you could go into debt service and you wouldn't have to necessarily shock your levy or say, we just can't do it. And so the county has low debt, generally speaking, even with those big two projects. Comparatively, we have low debt and that's another advantage.
Any other discussion? Have a motion and a second to lower the levy rate by thirty nine cents. All in favor, signify by aye.
Well, one of the board clarify exactly the levy, just for the record.
All, you want all, all categories or just the, the final one?
General sub would be.
Uh, you can do all of them for the record. Let's, let's do it.
Want us to go all the way out to the digits?
Uh, yes, please.
I've got pretty good eyes. You want me to take a shot at it? All right, following on Supervisor McDonough's motion. This would be the cumulative of all the, the levies. General basic at three point five, general sub at one point four eight eight one five. And MHDD zero, the debt service levy, which should be auto calculated to thirty six one nine four. And then the rural basic level levy for three dollars and sixty five nine oh two. For a countywide total levy, if you live in unincorporated areas, nine dollars zero zero nine one one.
Thank you. Okay. So I think we've gotten through the big stuff that we need to get through today. So what I will do next. Is take all of the stuff that was done today, the new levy, calculate the taxes. And then next Friday, we'll get together at one o'clock in the afternoon to do the final review. So we'll go through all of this, look at all the levies and fund balances again to show you where they're going to end up based on this budget. And look at the first publication that will go out the following Wednesday. To start our, our series of public hearings.
Stella, when are we meeting on this again? Next, the eighteenth?
Yes, the eighteenth.
At one o'clock?
Yep, one o'clock.
Are they the eighteenth, one o'clock?
Yes. Okay. Well, I appreciate everybody's time and hard work today. I know this is one of our. Our in-depth days, so I appreciate everybody.
Thank you, Stella. Good work. Thank you to my colleagues. I appreciate all the back and forth. Right. And, and at some point, to the auditor, Drago, Denise Dolan used to take everybody out for drinks. I don't know what, what part of that cycle it was. It got thrown off by COVID, but. So I'm looking for that invitation at some time.
That invitation's in the mail, so I hear the post office.
I'll look for it in the spring, all the same.
Spring twenty five.
A motion to adjourn.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to adjourn. All in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Aye. We stand adjourned.
See you Monday. Have a good weekend, everyone.